It is seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second? Second one, Mr. Danny. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. It is unanimous, five to zero. Are there any walk-ins this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Gail Meehan, and I think you all received-
Just need your address.
Oh, 16 Barrie's Landing, Situate. And I think you all got an email from me today. Did anybody not get it?
I did not read it, but I did get it.
I haven't received- I haven't looked at my email. I've been out of the office this afternoon, so...
Alright, but in brief, I'll try to keep it brief. I've been trying to get a mooring here in Situate since I moved here in 2003, and I was on the list in 2004 to 2007, and got knocked off for lack of coming in and renewing. So, I heard that a group of people came down here and got back on the mooring list because the process was so willy-nilly and it wasn't clear what you had to do, because I had been on the list for like four years and never had to renew. So, I got that, so I just accepted it and got back on the list. And I've gone down to the harbor master's office. Apparently, one time I emailed, and one time I missed going in, but this past fall, we have a new harbor master and a new secretary, and when we went in, they were not there. I have someone that went in with me, and we talked about this mooring list, and I wasn't asked to sign anything, and I left. And then, in March, I was calling about something else to the harbor master. I said, "Oh, this was not going well, what I was calling about, but I won't get into that." And I'm feeling a little bit like things are not going well for me at the harbor master's office. So, I said, "Well, am I on the mooring list still?" And Ellen, who's a great person, said, "Let me check," and she was like, "No," and I said, "Wow." I came in and did what they said, you know, and now I'm not on the mooring list. So, I've had- I've written to the harbor master, I've spoken to him, I've contacted Maura. She spoke to you, Patty?
Patricia.
Patricia. She spoke to you, the harbor master spoke, and apparently because- I'm sorry?
Yeah, and the harbor master recommended you contact me as well, I think.
No, no, he didn't say that to me. And today, I was down there, and he said, "Come up here." So, I'm here. He said- Okay, he didn't say that. So, I'm just trying to follow the rules here, so if I should leave and talk to you, I'm happy to do that. Is that what I should do? Happy to do that.
We can't- you're a walk-in, so you're really just- we can't really make any decisions on it tonight, but we can, you know, listen to you. I think, Tricia, is- should she come and talk to you during business hours about this, or is it-
Yeah, it was my understanding that's been suggested to her, and that was suggested to her today.
No, it was not suggested. I was told to come up to Town Hall.
So, we're not gonna argue about that.
Well, understood, understood, but Maura's already discussed it with her, and I believe your decision is, "No, I can't be back on the mooring list," isn't it?
I have not discussed this issue with you.
I thought that she discussed it with you.
I discussed it with the harbor master.
Oh, I thought you talked to her.
Well, Tricia's obviously aware that we had the conversation, but it was the harbor master and myself that had the conversation.
Alright, forgive me. I will make an appointment to see you, and hopefully I won't have to come back.
Okay.
But I will say to the board that the mooring regs are not written correctly, they're not easily understood, and it should be looked at. I'm hearing a lot of complaints. I'm just one of a few, so I don't think- I think one of the reasons I moved here was because it's a friendly town with a port, with a harbor, and it's not feeling friendly right now. So, I'm hoping you guys can all restore the friendliness to Situate.
Well, I will tell you this. We will look at the regulations and see if it's not clear to make sure it's cleared up.
Yeah, you should.
This has been going on for 300 years, you know, so, and I think each of us know people that have come to us over the years with the same problem, because unfortunately, there's a lot of people that want moorings, and there's a list in place, and there's time guidelines, and if you're not on a mooring, you're not really paying attention to it, and a lot of people miss it and have to start over again.
Yeah, and agreed. I mean, even the harbor master himself came to the Water Waste Commission like three weeks ago with the regs rewritten saying that you have to sign, because it's clearly not there. It's not there. It doesn't say that. If it had said that when I went into the harbor master's office, I would've said, "I have to sign something," because this means a great deal to me, and I'm just- I'm not gonna stop. This is not right, what's happening to me, so I'm sure you will.
We will look at the regulations. You want to meet with Tricia and see where it goes from there?
I will.
Hold on one second. Are you videoing the TV?
Yes.
You can't do that without permission, and you gotta disclose that.
Is this a public meeting?
It is, but you have to at least tell the people that you're doing. We have video on it.
Oh, she's going to her, so she can hear what she's-
But I'm just only saying, it's just the rules that normally you have to tell us that you're gonna videotape, because that's part of the process, so everybody understands that, which is fine. Normally, you have to state you're gonna videotape, okay?
I'm a real reporter. I've never heard anyone having stated-
Actually, that's in the statute.
Well, it's a part of the opening meeting, you have to disclose that you're videotaping a public meeting. If you're a reporter. I'll just let her hear what she says, so she can remember what she's-
Yeah, it's gonna be on television.
It's on YouTube, though, if you want. It'll get on TV, too, either way. Doesn't matter. I only say that you gotta state it, that's all.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for your service. I mean, I know this isn't an easy job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other walk-ins tonight? No? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to the report of the town administrator.
Thank you. Just a quick report on the public facilities update. If you haven't driven by the three facilities, you know, that's sort of a picture's worth a thousand words. The steel is up at both the library and the public safety building, and they're going in very good order, and things are going along well, and the school is making great strides. The art wing is done, if you haven't had a chance to see it. Really fine job doing there. The public building commissioner's gonna have site visits at both of the buildings in the next few weeks, and last week, we met with the consultant to start looking at the furniture, furnishings, and then equipment in the public safety building. So, good news all around there. Things are progressing nicely. I want to talk a little bit about the meeting Thursday night on the mapping Situate's coastline. As you know, we had a presentation from John Ramsey a few months ago, about, I don't know, six, eight weeks ago, from Applied Coastal on their job, which is to map the coastline and see where our vulnerable areas are and priority areas and recommendations to address those issues. I think, as Maura has stated in the past, this is really sort of the linchpin for us to be able to do our short-term and our long-term plan. A number of the areas that have been identified, we're already scheduled to or have done work, the usual suspect areas like Oceanside, Edward Foster Road. So, this meeting is Thursday evening. It is at the-
Cafeteria.
Cafeteria, thank you. I have this written, and I still don't believe it. Jenkins School Cafeteria, so-
No, what's it, Jenkins?
High School Cafeteria, right. High School Cafeteria at seven o'clock. We are- this is phase one of a two-phase process, and it's entitled assessing coastal erosion, sediment transport, and prioritization management for our shoreline protection. So, the entire four and a half miles of fortified shoreline, along with other options, are gonna be at this meeting. I did reach out to all of you last week to see who would be able to attend, and we do need a moderator to do that. Tony's agreed to do that. I had a briefing on it Thursday. I think there's some very interesting information and illuminating information about, you know, what the town can do, what the state and federal government can do, and what residents can do to help address the issues of climate change, sea level rise. I think one of the most interesting things in this study that we'll find out Thursday night, not to tell too much, is that, you know, we often hear when we look at the impacts of storms, we always compare it to a hundred-year storm. The storms that we are having now only differ by about two to three feet from the hundred-year storms, and we're having those every two to three years now. So, the impact of that in terms of erosion on the coastline is exacerbating that, or much more. So, I encourage folks to go. I think it's very informative information. And then, Phase Two, the second piece, is- needs to be wrapped up by June 30th, so there'll be a second part, so... And again, it's at the High School Cafeteria.
Is it six or seven? I thought I saw something-
Six to eight.
Six to eight.
Six, alright, so-
Yeah. So, that's that.
Is that the PowerPoint or something on it?
Yes, but-
Did we get those?
No, you didn't. This is- this was the draft for me to review and give my feedback on it for the presentation. So, I can get you an advance copy if you want for tomorrow. Let me make a note of that, Tony. Two other things that are coming up to put on the calendar, but also for folks watching at home, is May 5th. We have our second annual Board and Committee meeting, coming on the heels of the very successful one we had. This is essentially an open house for folks who are interested in serving on a town board or committee to come and find out anything they want. We have representatives from all the boards and committees there and information, and that will be from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Jenkins School Cafeteria. And again, May 5th, so we encourage everybody to attend that as well. And that's where we got a lot of good folks to submit interest for appointments as we start your annual appointments next month, so kudos to Lorraine and Michelle for doing that. The next thing I want to talk about is the Situate Harbor Cultural District launch. This is a really- I sent you some information about this after your last meeting that I missed. This is the official kickoff for the cultural district. We have the folks from the state coming to do, if you will, a ribbon-cutting ceremony without the ribbon. There'll be an event for town officials at the inn at Situate Harbor at 6:00 on May 6th. And then, following that, it's been tied into the monthly First Friday, but also the Situate Art Walks. We are also going to have some plein air paintings, so Sexy's gonna have- be selling food. We're gonna have a number of exhibits in addition to some swag bags. So, the Cultural Harbor District Committee has really put together some really terrific programming and events. There's posters up in Town Hall that are also available as limited edition prints, and there'll be an auction of the plein air painting at 6:45, right after the opening ceremony, so we expect a lot of people in the harbor. The town is an equal partner in the cultural district. We have to raise matching grant money that we receive from the state, and we're doing very well from donations and sponsors of this event. And so, this is, as I said, the inaugural event.
Tricia, on that point, do you have like, or are we intending at some point to have signage that you're in the Situate Cultural Arts District?
So, you should see those signs go up?
Those are up. The signs should be going up very soon. There's a post right over by the inn. I walked them. We missed the pundits the other day. We did install a one post. The other post is, as you're coming in to, right across from Maria's on the other side. The post, I think, is in, and it's cemented in. They haven't mounted the signs yet, though. And then, there'll be one at Cedar Point, also, that I haven't walked.
Lighthouse, beginning of Cold Park Way, which indicates the bookends for the thing, for the district, and then the inn, and I think one is gonna be at Hathley and Jericho. I think we have four sites, so-
We have two of the posts up.
Yeah, so, and they'll go up this week, right?
They should go up this week, those signs.
Yeah, so, there is one thing that I do want to take a moment to share with the board, and we will take a moment to do this on May 6th, is Bob Serino was one of three individuals who worked tirelessly to put this application together for the Situate Cultural Harbor District. This is really an initiative that was led and completely done by people outside the formal town organization to get the application in. The town came- became involved just as the application was submitted, because we had to submit it on their behalf and also indicate that we'd be a partner with them. And Bob was one of the driving forces behind this. He was due to sort of be the emcee at this event, May 6th, and I'm very sad to say that he passed away last week. So, we hope to honor him there, but I only met him very recently through this process, and he's a lovely, lovely man, cared very deeply about the town and this harbor cultural district. And we are working on ways to sort of remember his legacy, but I just wanted to take a moment to publicly acknowledge his work and his time in that. And he also, his wife Marilyn just made a donation to the district in his name, because it was very important to him that we'd be able to make our annual cash match, so unfortunate there. The other thing, and I had Lorraine leave some time on the agenda so you wouldn't be behind on your schedule items, is I want to talk about the FEMA maps. Last that, I updated the board. I attended a meeting with the towns of Marshfield and Duxbury about the revised FEMA maps that we got about six weeks ago. The maps, revised maps, were based on the town's successful appeal of the original maps issued in 2013. There were a number of changes made to the revised maps, and a lot of the issues that we had that resulted in us making the initial appeal were addressed. However, there are still some issues with the revised maps. As you know, staff reviewed them. We found a few inconsistencies. As you know, because of the short turnaround time for us to file appeal, the town submitted certain transects that needed to be reviewed. We had Woods Hole Group looked at the methodology, and that methodology was accepted by FEMA as part of the appeal. However, that methodology was not applied through all the other transects in town, so that was one of the purposes of our meeting, going to meet with FEMA folks last month. We offered FEMA to work collaboratively with them and Woods Hole Group to address the other outstanding changes that we saw in the maps, so that people would not receive increased flood insurance bills based on maps that may have some errors in their area. Again, we're dealing with a small population as compared with the original population back in 2013, but there's still some errors in the map, and since we have to accept these maps at town meeting, we obviously want them as perfect as possible. We were not given overly optimistic indications at that meeting that FEMA would be receptive to that. All of these decisions are coming out of Washington FEMA and not the Region One Northeast Regional Office, although the Region One EPA FEMA Administrator was in the meeting. And so, we were notified on last Wednesday that FEMA was just going to go ahead and issue the letter of final determination. We had indications that they would ask if FEMA folks could work with Woods Hole Group on some of the other errors in the map that apparently fell on deaf ears. So, it looks like right now that we're gonna be issued the letter of final determination on or about May 4th. That means the town has six months to accept the maps. That puts us at a drop-dead date of October. What needs to happen in the process then is that if we believe there are errors in the map after we convince, hopefully, town meeting to accept the maps, we have to file a letter of map revision. So, once again, we, the staff here at Town Hall, will have to do an outreach and education campaign for residents in terms of those that we think might benefit from the LOMAR process. And we will- are waiting a proposal from Woods Hole Group to find out how big that population is that we might want to address. So, for all intents and purposes, you know, the town will be paying for some errors that FEMA did not change in the revised maps. I spoke with Julia Frederick of Senator Warren's office today. Senator Warren's office has been immensely helpful, along with Congressman Keating's office in this process, and, you know, expressed her- my concerns on behalf of our town, Duxbury and Marshfield, about this whole process. And the frustration that I feel, I shared with her that, you know, I've been doing this 31 years, and this is the most frustrating thing I have ever been through in terms of dealing with a situation that clearly is fraught with inconsistencies and is not a level playing field. But the second piece that I shared with her was that our communities are really some of the first communities in the country to go through this appeal process, and that for a lot of intents and purposes, the deadlines and the comment periods and the benchmarks for responding to a lot of this stuff were timetables that were set based on, to the best of people's ability, but really were never lived in real time. And that's been a real problem that I shared with her, that we had 30 days to respond to the maps the first time we got them, and so, we couldn't possibly do the hundred, you know, the 27 transects or whatever we have in town, so we had to pick the four that we did. And two weeks of that 30-day process was to get a proposal, to find a consultant capable of doing the work, get a proposal, and get them under contract so they could actually do the work. So, there's sort of a two-fold approach that, you know, we want to do here to go forward. So, you know, whenever the maps are done, again, 10 years from now, you know, some other communities don't experience, you know, what our three communities had in this process. Our plan right now is Woods Hole Group is looking at all the maps from the three communities, and they are pulling together a list of where they think the inaccuracies are, and will give us yet another proposal to tell us what the cost of that will be to develop LOMARS. And our plan would be, after town meeting accepts those maps, we will file the LOMARS immediately. What that is gonna cost, I have absolutely no idea, and, you know, that's something that we'll have to deal with once we get the proposal and see how big that population is. But obviously, we want them to do the work now. The other thing, and I know Dave Ball's gonna be working very closely with the Coastal Coalition on this, is really, we need to also educate folks that they must pay their flood insurance premium, even though that's increased, because we can't have folks in a situation where they jeopardize losing it or think they don't have to pay. You know, we've been in this holding pattern for two years with our appeals that all of Plymouth County has benefited from, but folks now need to pay the bill that they're going to get. And also, we have to educate town meeting about the importance of accepting these maps, imperfect though they are, because if we do not, then we will lose national flood insurance protection status, and we will never get any reimbursement for storm damage. So, again, another, you know, heavy burden for the staff and the folks that are dealing with in this process is still not ended, but that's where we are right now. And again, you know, and I know, it's been an incredibly complex process. It's very, very technical, and we've all learned a lot about it. But, you know, once we get that letter next week, then the time clock for six months starts, and we're on to town meeting, and then we're at the letter of map revision. And then, once that happens, and we actually file LOMARS or whatever, then, you know, I think, then it's appropriate to talk about other avenues in terms of- because we would've then exhausted all our administrative relief options. So, I know that's a lot, but I wanted to make sure I had sufficient time to share with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, the few takeaways from that are, one, don't let your flood insurance lapse, because if it does, you're gonna lose any grandfathering capability to get back into it. And two, we have to pass the maps, even though we don't love the maps, because as Tricia just mentioned, we don't get any federal support for any of the storm damage that needs to be repaired here. Right now, we get 75% of the cost to do repair work for storm-related damages, so we have to educate the population and how to make sure that they understand everything when we go through this. And one other point that you brought up, which we just went through as well, you know, they say they give you 30 days to do this. You know, by the time you get it, read it, understand it, then you have to go find a consultant who is doing this. There's very few consultants that can actually do this work, and they're actually doing it for the other communities that need it as well, so they're swamped, and then the timeline is right up against you. So, we lived that firsthand a couple of months ago. So, thank you and the staff for all the work that you've done there. Anyone have any questions, Dad?
No, it's good to have you. Thank you.
And I just have one more item, and that is, Sean, you wanna come up? Sean Anderson is our new water superintendent. Started three weeks ago, four weeks ago. Still coming to work. Sean, sports selectman, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to have you meet him.
Nice to meet you all. Thanks for coming in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have you been at the plant for- is this your first week?
Uh, no, I've actually been here about a month now.
Oh, good. See, we know each other. How do you like it?
I like it a lot.
Sean, I'm just gonna go over all the parts right now. We took the tour, and this is a little quiz. Great to have you. Good, great staff over there, you know.
Yep, absolutely.
Obviously, we've had- we're dealing with our water issues in town right now. In fact, it was just a water main break today, right?
Yep.
Somewhere.
Old Oak and Bucket.
We got the brown water emails, so hopefully, those'll decrease once we finish getting all the pipes in, right, Cam?
So, Tom.
Any questions? Where'd you come from, Sean?
I've been in the water industry for about 22 years. Worked for a couple of different water districts. Also worked for the town of Plymouth for a few years, progressively, just working my way up in positions, so.
Great.
Also did a little bit in the private sector as well.
Great. Welcome aboard.
Glad to have you.
Happy to have you.
I want everyone to know that so far, everybody's been great to work with here, and I'm just really happy to be here.
Well, this is a great board you'll be working with, the best. How do you spell your first name like that, right?
No, the other way. And Sean, you can tell John Clarkson that you're late because of me, so, Gabe, he's due at the Water Resources Committee next door.
Well, we'll let you run. Nice meeting you.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Well, thank you.
Is that it, Trish?
Yes, it is.
Any questions on any of the buildings? So, no change orders? No change orders as of late at the-
No, no, nothing, nothing new. The public safety has a lot being reviewed, but they've only had one approved change order so far, so.
The library, I know we're gonna talk about that in a minute. It looks great. I drove by it the other day. It looked twice as big as I thought it was gonna be, so it really looks awesome. And the public safety's coming along, and then right back here, they're way ahead, or not way ahead, but ahead of schedule, so that's great. Alright, so before, I'm gonna change the order just a little bit here, so Kathy can go home. We're just gonna talk about setting the poll hours real quick, so if you wanna come up?
Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening. How's everyone?
Well, thanks.
Good, how are you, Kathy? Good, good, good. So, we have a challenge, couple of challenges on the ballot for the annual town election to be held on Saturday, May 21st, and I recommend that the poll hours be set and voted on tonight. I'm recommending poll hours be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I think that's a block, a big enough block of time for voters to get to and from the polls on the Saturday. And if not, keep in mind, we have absentee balloting. I expect the ballots to be in probably next week, the absentees, if not the week after, so keeping that in mind.
So, sometimes we've gone till 7:00, right?
Sometimes we have gone till 7:00. There are two, both selectmen's races are being challenged, okay? You have two opponents, two candidates for other running, and then there's two for the school committee, position one.
Two for?
Two running on school committee for position one. The incumbent chose not to go up for reelection. So, we have two more.
Who was that?
Michael Hayes, and she goes by Amy Tarsala. Her name is Mariel Tarsala.
And that's for Robin's spot, right?
Correct. Robin Laverne, yep.
Kathy, why not 7:00 AM?
7:00 PM.
7:00 AM opening time?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep it a little shorter, that's all. I mean, we can-
People that work on Saturdays that would have to leave Situate and possibly be back by 6:00.
That's true, and that's where the absentees come in play. We have absentee balloting up until noon the day before the election, so Friday, the day before, would be the cutoff for absenteeing. I mean, that's why I come before you, is to just get your feedback on my recommendation of polling hours. So, we're talking, what, eight hours?
How much time before the things you have to get there to set up?
Usually, it's set up before you-
Is it set up for you, or is it-
I'm sorry, set up the poll?
Yeah, so if we started at 7:00 instead of 8:00?
Oh, I get there. I have to be here an hour and a half, at least an hour and a half here at Town Hall to get the ballots and the machines over with the police to the polls and DPW. And then, we have at least another hour of work to do to get all the machines up and running, and then we open the polls, so.
So, what are you suggesting, maybe?
Are you suggesting 7:00?
I don't have to hear in that. I don't want to get here at 4:00 AM.
Any other discussion on the polling hours? It's a Saturday. It gives people, I think, a-
I think 8:00 to 6:00 is fair.
What about parking over there with all that construction?
Um, well, there's no school, so we're fine, there's no sports events. We didn't really have a problem, the last election was small, so, and we have the other one, May 10th election.
Soccer, is there soccer on that field?
There should be, there's no fields that are supposed to be open on that Saturday, I've already checked, so.
It's okay.
No pressure, no. I usually go clear it through rec, yeah, I usually clear it through rec that there are no, because that parking is designated for voters only, the two back lots.
So, actually, what we can do now is have people park up in Cushing and they walk down, I think we did that for something.
We did?
Yeah. There was like a sports camp or something that they had to.
Oh, probably.
Great, if no other discussion, motion?
Move to set the polling hours for the May 21st election 2016 from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Second?
Second by Mr. Kern, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you there.
Thanks, Kathy.
Great, speaking of rec, we have a discussion vote for Citu Re- Recreation Disclosures. Maura?
Gentlemen, Maura.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Good. I'm here because Nancy Holt has advised me to come before you, that we have a little conflict of interest with some of the teachers that work for us at Recreation. We have our teachers from Situate High, some from Gates, some from Jenkins School, also other towns, that are directors of our programs. And we have kind of made that a policy, that we'd like teachers to run our camps in the summertime, because they're the most familiar with how to deal with children in the best way. We feel they're the most professional. So, the ones that work for the town of Situate have to be made special employees and exempt. So, that's why I'm here. And I gave a list to Lorraine, and they have filled out all the proper paperwork, so I'm looking to you for.
The list is in your, was in your package, sent to you.
Okay. Is it after all the applications?
It's this morning.
All the applications I've sent to you in the separate email, because they're received. Yes, yes.
Okay. Just want the list itself.
Do you need the list, name of the list?
We have to list the names.
Want to read the names?
Yeah, the list of names is in there, in the motion.
All right.
I see, I have the motion, but I don't have the names.
Yeah, I don't have the names either.
They're on the second part of the packet, there's 10.
Oh, here it is.
I got it.
Oh, and there's one more in there on there, that's Bob Sanderson, he's a golf pro in town.
He's on the list.
Yeah, I just wanted, he's not.
Do you have, did you want my hard copy?
A teacher.
I thought I had, Tony, I don't.
It's not in.
I have a list here, but I have notes on my list.
It's in the email, is it?
Thank you.
They sent him email this afternoon. I don't see a motion, though.
Would you like a motion?
I have a motion.
I do like the motion.
Hold on one second.
I have it.
I have a motion, but we just need the list.
I'm going to read the list real quick. So, Kathy McCarthy, Andrew Barlow, Brian Herkom, Brian Stewart, Jr., Craig Parkins, Christine Kane, Cassandra McNamara, Matt Poirier, Trevor Shatkin, and Robert Sanderson. So, most of these people run, did I mess up?
No.
Oh. Most of these people run camps for the coach, the sport that they coach or what have you, or Bob Sanderson's a golf pro, so he does a golf clinic. Matt Poirier's a basketball coach, he does a basketball clinic, so it makes a lot of sense that.
So, I'll go ahead with the motion, and then let's do the list after that, okay?
Yeah, and does anyone want to look at it? Did you guys just see it?
I actually did see the list, I just can't find it on this.
Okay.
Do you want to see it, Sean?
I don't have a problem with the list, so.
Right.
No.
Let me go over.
I read it earlier.
You're good?
Yeah. Let me just catch you up.
Do I make a motion? Do I have to read the names?
Yes, after.
Oh, that's why you gave me that. Okay, a little slow. Who was it?
Second page.
Sorry, okay. I apologize. Moved at the Board of Selectmen as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268 A, and we have reviewed the disclosure forms from the following municipal employees who seek to provide personal services to Situate Recreation. The exemption under Section, paragraph 20B is approved for the following municipal employees: Kathleen McCarthy, Andrew Barlow, Jr., Brian Herkom, Brian Stewart, Craig Parkins, Christine Kane, Cassandra McNamara, Matthew Poirier, Trevor Shatkin, and Robert Sanderson.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, 5 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you, sorry.
Maura, any other rec information you want to fill us in on?
Well, yeah, we, now we're at Jenkins School, that would be nice for everybody to know and everybody at home to know. We're very happy, we're kind of settled in. Please come by and visit us, and probably after school.
Are you on the second floor?
We're on the second floor. And what you do is you come to the front of the school, you ring the bell, and say you're here for rec, you stop at the front desk, and they give you a little tag, and then we meet you at the second floor. It's very nice and friendly, it's great.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maura.
Thanks, Maura.
Next on the agenda is update discussion vote on the Library Foundation update. Les Ball, and anyone else you want to bring up, Les?
Sure. I have with me Ginny Ayers, who's Vice President, and I want to thank you very much for giving us some time to talk with you. This is certainly an exciting time, and by the way, I'm over there every day pounding nails and working my tail off, making it work. I guess the question really is, how are we doing? And we want to start with that and give you an update on some of the things we're up to. See if I got all my material. We sent you a, some materials, but it was dated March 14th, and so, we're getting contributions every single day, and so this is a contribution. Even today, we got a $6,000 contribution, so there are additions being made all the And we have almost $980,000, which I kind of wished we'd gotten another 20. But we're, you know, my.
Les wanted so badly to come in here and say one.
My foundation members get very upset with me when I round up, so. We have, of that, $293,000 has not yet been received, and as we look at when the pledges have been made and when we expect to get the money, the expectation is we'll get $70,000 by the end of the year, another $158,000 by the next year, and so on. We've received $685,000 cash to date, and we've given you 500 of that, and tonight, we want to give you a check for another $100,000.
Great.
Thank you for the hard work.
Oh, it doesn't have to be on the. It's a good point. Thank you, Les.
I want to put that on another panel.
So, we have a number of other things we want to just go over quickly. One thing.
Les, before you do, you know, I want to, just because you brought this up.
Yep.
You know, this has been kind of a long road to get where we are.
It has been.
And we've talked about millions and millions of dollars of fundraising, and I think initially we thought we'd raise 12 million and then 5 million, you know, whatever it is, this has got to be the biggest single campaign effort that I've ever heard of, anyone raising for anything in this town. So, I'm very impressed by the million, which I know you're going to hit a million, I'm very impressed by that number, and I think you guys have put a ton of energy, a ton of effort, creativity, you did the fish, you do these events, you're getting people that are donating over a long period of time, $1,000 a year or $100 a year. So, I really want to pay all your group a lot of credit for the work that you've done here. It's a huge help to get the building done, and it's impressive.
Well, we really appreciate that, and, you know, we've said from the start, we think we're going to get to the 2 million, it's our best effort. We're seeing much more interest, people are calling us back where they weren't calling us back, people are calling us up and asking, how can we help? So, there's a lot more excitement. When they see the building, it's real.
And that's what they always told you.
That's what everybody's told us. And we had $100,000 a month in January, and that was the first time we've ever seen that, so we've had some excitement that's happened. One of the other things is, we've had 450 donors, and we gave you in your material a list of those, but they were in a spreadsheet and it was designed to be printed, so if you just looked at the spreadsheet on your machine, it kind of looks like they all flow together. So, we decided to print the sheet out for you and see the 450 names. So, and I think they're all voters, too, if I'm not mistaken, so that's good news. You mentioned the foundation, and there's a bunch of people here from the foundation tonight, I think there's five or six of us here. Everybody has been, has spent a lot of hours working on this project, and one of the things that was surprising as I started looking at the numbers is the financial contribution that has been made. Foundation members in and of themselves have given over $100,000 to this program. Three members have given over $25,000 each. So, I think that's an testament to our concern and our interest in the project, if you will. One thing that we've been working on, and you have in your material, is something called a memo of agreement. Every single person that has given us $2,500 or more has a right to a naming option, and so there are now 40 of those that are, fall into that category. And so, we've talked this over with Pam, we've worked it out with Kevin Colton and ourselves, and we've produced that, and that's in your material. What you will see from that agreement is that it identifies the name of the person, and by the way, you have two of them, you have a draft agreement, and you also have one for John and Ginny Kalopolis, who are one of our early contributors, and John was one of our early presidents, too. But the idea is, as you look through it, it identifies how much money they've given, the agreement of what asset is going to be named, whether it's a bookshelf, whether it's a room, whatever it might be. And then, on the top of the second page, if there is, if it's a timed pledge, in other words, they're giving, let's say, $50,000 over four years, it identifies when the monies will be paid and what our expectations are. Our expectation is that we will not name an asset until we've got 50% of the money in. And so, that's identified here. And what you will also see is you'll see four signature lines. The donor will sign it with the expectation that a foundation member will be there and signing it at the same time. The foundation will then approve it. And we've got a selectman signature, and we wondered if you want to be involved in each one of those, because as we said, there's 40 of them now. We expect by the end of this campaign, we'll have another 40. We could set it at a limit, we could say you only have to sign everything over $10,000, everything over $25,000, or whatever, that's entirely up to you, but I think we'd like to have your impression at some point.
Sure, you can sign, we can sign 40 pieces of paper, I think.
All right, okay. Shall we have a procedure where we pass them by?
You'll give them to Lorraine, and we'll make an announcement at the meeting and go or something like that.
All right, good. All right, we will do that. So, that document is there. There's a bunch of things that are really heating up, and I want to talk about a couple of things that we're doing. You also have in your, oh, we've also just received an anonymous $50,000 pledge. That name will be made public probably within three to four months, but they want it to be anonymous at the moment. The Marachi family is working on a $25,000 program to recognize Joy Von Idestein, who is Frank's sister, and name one of the rooms in her name, and so they're going to run a couple of programs and do some things. And they've all already collected about $7,000 or $8,000 towards that $25,000, so.
Gigi's sister.
No, it's Frank's sister.
Frank's sister.
So, we've done a bunch of different things, and so, as we go ahead, we've got a huge marketing effort, and we've put the marketing campaign in your material as well. Our goal is to really increase the awareness of the fundraising effort in the community and encourage citizens to join the effort. The thing that has been astonishing to us is the number of people who don't know what we're doing, in spite of the fact that they live in the community, they've seen everything that we've done and so forth, so we're trying to do whatever we can.
Les, you can say that again for us, too.
Yeah, I was like, welcome to our world.
I know, you know, you, well, we can go on and on, and we'll do this over a beer, John. We've had a great recent article in the April 14th copy of the Mariner about the building update, and also about an event for Oro that we're going to have, and we've done no other advertising for the Oro event, we've got 20 people already signed up for it, so, I mean, that attests to what's going on with them. We're scheduling a series of other events and articles with the Mariner as we go on. I'm going to ask Ginny to give you some material. This is material that we use in our solicitation. We have something we call a Bound Donor Kit, and we use that when we're trying to pitch somebody who might be a 5 to 10,000 donor or larger. You'll also see a glossy color brochure, which we pass out to loads of different people. We've probably printed 10,000 of those since we've been started, since we've been involved in the program. We're printing 10,000, 1,000 homes, I'm sorry, we're printing 1,000 Homes flyers right now, which is a little different and focusing on the 1,000 Homes program. Those are in production. You also have a bumper sticker, you can put that on your car, if you've got multiple cars, we'll give you multiple bumper stickers, we'd be more than happy with that. We created some little six-inch rulers, which have our name on it, we've got those in the library, people are picking them up all the time, we've given them out at a different series of events. We've had multiple mailings with year-end mailings, you know, don't forget this is the end of the year and make a tax contribution. We just recently made a mailing to people in town who we believe are capable of giving a large sum of money and who are over 70 and a half, because the IRS has just changed the rules about giving from an IRA account. And so, we notified, noted that in our mailing and sent out to about 200 different people information about that. We're on social media, we do a lot of things with Facebook, we're, we have a very significant website that we update all the time, we're doing stuff with Twitter as well. We're beginning to do some signage, you may have looked at the new library, you may have seen the sign that we got permission from the builder to put up, and it basically talks about the 1,000 Homes program, and it's a very simple sign, it says, "Join 1,000 Homes, Building for the Future," and gives our location. And that's, we've gotten information about that as well. We have some lawn signs that we've created, and you know there's a Run for Situate on Sunday, and we're going to put those on the Run, the root of the Run, and we're going to use those a little later on when we have the campaign in full force. We also have a display area in the library with a whole bunch of things going on there. We'd like to put another banner out, in fact, we'd like to put a couple banners out, we'd like to put a banner on 44 Jericho Road to advertise our efforts, and we'd like to put a banner out here in front of the town hall at some point for a short period of time, if that's something that you could approve for us.
Won't be a problem, shouldn't be. Town property, it's a fundraiser. Absolutely.
Okay. So, do we need a vote from you, or do?
Just talk to Kevin and see how to get him up and where to put him, see if they don't strike you.
Good. Let's talk a little bit about.
Golf course, frankly.
On the golf, well, it might be good there, too, or at the town dump, whatever.
Long the driftway, maybe, you're near the transfer station.
Yeah.
You know, because people go there all the time.
We've talked about just if we have a set number of banners rotating them around, so, you know, come up here for a month, put them here for a month.
Not a bad idea.
It's good, yeah.
Let's talk about the specific programs. The 1,000 Homes, as you know, is a program designed primarily for the, oh, let's say the 30- to 50-year-old citizen who wants to give, but, you know, they're strapped, and so we're asking them to give us $20 a month for four years. And loads of people have signed up, we've got about 200 in that, and so it, the idea is give us $1,000 over that period of time, your name will appear permanently in the library. We're going to really focus on that this summer, we're going to really hammer it for a couple of months. And the interesting thing is that we found that the city, the town of Hopkinton was doing that. And when we went back to them, they stole the idea originally from us, because we had it a long time ago. And they were very successful in just doing that. So we've captured a lot of ideas from them, and we're using those. Our goal is to enlist another 500 members, and if we do that, that's $500,000. So that's one of our primary goals. We'll have multiple coffee and wine events, cheese events, we hope to have 15 or 20 of those. We're going to have lawn signs, we've got about 100 lawn signs, we want to distribute to people who are already in the program, and people who are on places like First Parish Road, some people drive around, you know, people will see it. And we're hoping it's going to create sign envy, so how do I get a sign on my lawn? And we think that that will happen. We're also seeking a challenged donor, and we found in some of these programs that you can sometimes find somebody who will say, "Look, if you can get 200, I'll give you 50,000." So we're looking for that type of donor, and we think they're out there. And we're going to be involved in continuing events like Run for Situate and so forth. Major gifts, we're expecting to complete 15 to 20 neighborhood parties by the end of the year. We did a big one at Jerry Kelly's house last year, with General Casey spoke, we charged $250 a head, we get about $5,000 to $6,000, and every single person there is a candidate for a much larger gift, and we're spending time talking to them. In fact, I had two calls today with people involved with that. We hope between now and the end of the year that we'll have 10 to 15 gifts in the $25,000 or more range, which is about $250,000 to $375,000. We hope 20 to 30 gifts in the $5,000 to $10,000 range, and that's, we're estimating 100 to 250. We're looking at businesses, we've sold, or we've solicited donations from six to seven businesses already, and several of them at the end of your list that you've got there. And we've got between $1,000 and $10,000 already from these people, and we've got a number of others that we're looking at. We have a program we're putting together for realtors and so forth. We expect to contact three to four businesses per week, with the idea that we'll get 30 or 40 businesses at $1,000. We're looking at foundations, five to six foundations, our proposals are in the works right now. And one foundation that we really want to get to, and we think is a big potential, is the GE Foundation. You may have read that GE is coming to Boston, they've committed $50 million to the Boston area for education-related programs. We've also heard that a number of their executives are going to be living in the Cohasset-Hingham Situate area, and so we think it's a prime candidate for us to go and get to them. So that's one of our primary goals. Upcoming events, we're going to be involved with Run for Situate, we're going to have a booth there, we're going to try to sell the 1,000 Homes program, because that's our audience, that's the group that we're looking at. Our evening at Oro's, we have over 20 people attending already, and our goal is to raise quite a bit of money there. It's a cheap event, it's $35 a head for coming in, but we're hoping people will leave with a smaller checkbook than when they came in with. And we're going to have a lot of wine and cheese events as we go on. And then we have a library grand gala coming as we, as we open up the library, and we're hoping that that'll be the final thing that we do. And the goal is that by this time next year, we'll be closing shop, and hopefully having the money. So, I think that's about it. We really are very appreciative of all your support, we hope you can come to some of our events, we hope we can see you at some of the places, and we hope you can talk to your friends and neighbors about helping us with the fundraising.
Great, well, again, the effort's impressive, I see all of you around town at the different events, and I think it's great, and I think now that the building's up and you see the structure, it's going to even be, draw more attention to its continued success, and great job of what you've done so far.
Good.
Anyone want to add anything?
Just want to say thank you, obviously, there's been a lot of organization and thought put into what you're doing, so I think you have some great new foundation members that are putting in a lot of effort, so.
We've had just wonderful people, and all kinds of people have stepped up to the bar. We have a policy in the foundation that you have to step down after a certain set of terms. We've stepped back from that, and we've said to a couple of members, "Your term is up, but you can't leave."
Yeah.
We want them here when we cut that ribbon, so.
Understood.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, you know, Les, and Ginny, and Skip, Karen, you know, for everybody involved, Kevin, where are you, there you are, it's amazing to see a million dollars. Tony's absolutely right, and I, you know, one of the thoughts I had was, you know, you've covered a lot of bases, trying, when the girders go up and the building's getting built, you're right, people now can see it, they can tangibly say, "I have some kind of connection" by contributing to it. And you're trying to do everything you can. One thing I was thinking, I know Sean and I talked about another event, but for another organization, but possibly a golf outing, free of charge, it's a public building, public, you know, the Whittles Walk, it's not an idea, I just did the numbers, I mean, that's 14 grand if you're able to get four foursomes, or two foursomes for each hole, you know, that could be a really good potential with an auction or something. Usually golf outings are not successful because of the cost.
Right.
But we own the golf course, it's municipal.
That's very nice.
So it's another thought process to maybe think about fundraising. And I have to tell you, I can't wait to walk in, to walk into the cathedral ceiling, because it's a great design, it really is.
It is.
It's a magnificent building. And they kept the bones of the original, and which I think is important to preserve the architecture of the '70s, even though normally 70 buildings tend to be a little bit non-conforming, but it's well done, so.
And this one was non-conforming, as we found out.
And I will say, you know, that's unfortunate, because it had nothing to do with anybody in planning or whatnot.
Right.
Now, that was a federal building that was poorly constructed based on what they did, and it was all hidden, a lot of things that were not foreseen. And there may be people complaining on Facebook and all this other junk, but the reality is, that was something that you could not determine until you actually started taking stuff down.
Right.
And asbestos is another issue, that, you know, frankly, those are costs, but they were unforeseen.
Yeah.
So, well done.
Good.
And just so everybody knows, you're still under budget.
Yeah.
So, all the overruns that have gone on are within the contingency of the bid, so.
We, uh.
I'd like to think that we have quick take credit for being under budget, but I know Jesse, Finney, the director, and Karen Campbell, the building committee, have been working so very hard to make sure that it stays in budget, and plus them, it has to.
Well, thank you guys for coming in.
Hold on, one second, I'm not even smoking. Marty, you want to go first?
Well, you can go first.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I mean, based on what you've done now, and with the plan you have, you know, in place, with all the excitement of the building being there, I think you're going to reach your goal.
I hope so.
Yeah, I mean, it looks to me like it will.
Yeah, everybody we've talked to say, says we're going to do it, and we've had people, we had one person who stepped up very, very early on and gave us $5,000 and said, "You know, libraries are not my idea." But he's been so helpful in ideas, and the last time I talked to him, he talked about his initial gift. So I think there's another gift coming, so I don't know what that'll be.
His initial gift, we like that.
Nice term, yeah.
Well, we've had, we've had that, we've had one person raise their contribution from $10,000 to $25,000 recently, and we've had another one raise theirs from 15 to 25. So, I mean, it's happening, and loads of people are saying, "You know, I really want to be involved."
Sean?
Some of us had our doubts in the beginning, and you've proven us wrong, all right? And I, the only thing I can say, and I'm going to repeat what everyone else said, but you're so ambitious, thank you, never could have done it without the group, whoever you are, and hopefully it's more than just a half a dozen.
Oh, no.
All right? Yeah, no.
That's a side that will stay.
Yeah. Thank you very, very much. Karen's been at every single public building meeting, town administrator has been beaten up, the architects and OPMs to keep those costs down as much as the Public Buildings Committee, but it's exciting, and I thank you as well, it's.
Well, it has been hard work, but you have to also thank the 450 contributors.
Oh, absolutely.
Because they're, they're the ones that are making it happen, and they're the ones that, you know, we smile whenever we get a contribution, and we're so happy whenever we get a new one.
No matter what size.
No matter what size, and, you know, I've told the story about the nine cents from Bob Nelson's daughter, I've told that story 100 times, but we've been so happy with every single gift we've gotten.
Right, thanks.
Good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We'll see you in February.
See you in February.
Another three months or something, yeah, great.
Well, we probably will be back more often with gifts as we go on.
It's exciting.
Can always fit you in the agenda.
Good.
All right, moving on to the next item, the Situate Harbor Yacht Club Outdoor Entertainment Permit.
Maureen Ray.
Jess.
Hi, how are you?
Hi there, good evening, Maureen Ray, Club Manager for the Situate Harbor Yacht Club, representing the club tonight on behalf of the club. And I'm here requesting issuance for our annual 2016 outdoor entertainment permits. I provided Lorraine a list a couple weeks ago with all of the events that we have scheduled for outdoor entertainment, which includes a couple of bands, a couple of singers, and I think, believe that you have the list in front of you.
Yes.
Is this just normal?
Normal.
Right.
Yeah, there's only one or two, so our opening night reception, we usually have the band inside, we have it in the tent this year, but the tent is sided, and it's only going till 11 o'clock, 6 to 11. But last year, we had singers on the back deck, we have a DJ in the tent for luminary night, it's all pretty much the norm, what they've been doing for years there.
The country line dancing?
That's new.
Nice.
Could you just join or something, Tony?
I'm quite a line dancer. Okay, anyone have any questions about this?
No.
Wish I was a member, looks like fun.
Yes, it's a great place.
Great, can I have a motion?
Will the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day entertainment license on Saturday, May 14, 2016, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. for a band inside tent on the lawn? Sunday, May 29, 2016, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. for a band inside tent on the lawn? Friday, Fridays, June 24, July 1, August 19, from 7:00 to 9:00 for a raw bar night with a guitar player and singer on the back deck? Saturday, June 25, 2016, from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. for a marina party with a guitar player and singer on the back deck? Saturdays, July 2, 15, 30, August 6, and 26, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. for summer concerts on the lawn? Monday, July 4, 2016, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. for country line dancing on back lawn with iPod music and speakers? Friday, July 8, 2016, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. for country line dancing on back lawn with iPod music and speakers? Wednesday, July 13, 2016, from 5:30 to 7:30 for a pool party with DJ by the pool? Friday, July 22, 2016, from 7:00 to 10:30 p.m. for a deck party with a band on the back deck? Friday, August 5, 2016, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. for a luminary party with a DJ inside the tent? Wednesday, August 10, 2016, from 5:30 to 9:30, to 9:00 p.m. for a fashion show with announcer under the tent? And finally, Saturday, September 3, 2016, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. for Labor Day Dance inside tent with guitar, player, and music on the back deck?
Second?
Second by Mr. O'Toole, further discussion? Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Busy schedule.
Have fun.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
We have to do a few spot checks during the season.
Come visit anytime.
Did you know in the old days that when you were selecting, you used to get a free membership?
Really? Next on the agenda is the MAPC parking study.
Good evening.
How are you?
Please, please.
Yeah. So, we've talked about this a number of times.
Where are we, where are we tonight, Mark?
Got to just vote.
So I guess that, that becomes the question, I mean, the last time I was here, and Officer Billings is here with me tonight, too, because he's done an extensive amount of work on this over the course of the past months as well. We went through some, some design ideas, as far as some changes that could be made, and I guess we're looking for further information as far as how you guys want to move forward.
Sure.
My concern is that, you know, we have to sort of move forward on these to get the signage in place before the start of the summer season, so folks can get educated and the flow is known.
Right.
Right. So the last meeting, do you want to go item by item, like changing that to a one-way street, is that?
Sure, so there are, there are a number of ideas in here that we put together as kind of a comprehensive plan as far as changes that could be made in the Cole Parkway area. This was reviewed by Traffic Rules, and ultimately, if this is something you decide upon, we can do an executive action so that there can be changes to this traffic schedule to reflect these new traffic prohibitions. But when you're looking at Cole Parkway, which is on that first map that you have there, the, one of the big changes, starting from Front Street, is a change to two-hour parking from end to end. Right now, there's some inconsistency as far as some one-hour parking, some two-hour parking, so it basically make it consistent along the stretch of Front Street all the way up by the inn, and as you get up towards Eberdam.
Would there be a time constraint?
A two-hour limit.
No, but is it like from 6:00 to 8:00?
That was on, I think that was on the 8:00 to 6:00, was how we set that for the two-hour limit.
Yeah, it says, it says a two-hour limit, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Right.
And then.
We're talking about the actual, we're talking about.
Yeah, every, everything's.
No, no, it's the same.
Okay.
It's the color.
On the, right, exactly.
It's by the yellow, yeah.
And then, as you get into Cole Parkway, doing a tiered system.
Right.
So the idea being is that we want to improve safety, we want to increase parking in there, but we also want to make it more beneficial to the businesses. So people who are coming down there to frequent those retail establishments and the restaurants and things are getting kind of that preferred parking that's closer. So that first tier within Cole Parkway is, again, that 8:00 to 6:00 is the short-term parking or two-hour limit, and then as you move through the parking lot, those times are extended.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
I just have a question. Did, did we engage the merchants at all with these discussions?
So, see Marty shaking his head some, too.
Yeah, I talked to almost, most of the merchants down on the backside of the, you know, on Cole Parkway itself, they love it.
Oh, good, okay, I just wanted to make sure that this.
The one, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The one thing that they asked is, looking at this, I gave them, Mark actually got me copies of the plan, and they just asked on the, on the long-term and the overnight, which could be all day long or whatever, right, that the larger vehicles don't really block the view as it is now, you know, we have the problem with the, with the docks being there and stuff, but they were just asked to, you know, to try and keep that part of it open, sort of as it is now, so, you know, most of you of those, of those shops is towards like the bandstand and all that sort of stuff, so keep the larger vehicles, the oversized vehicles shifted more towards the launching area, you know? That's, that's the only thing they asked.
I was going to ask about the trucks, I'm curious, like, what the thought process, if anybody discussed at Traffic Rules, because trucks are parking down there. I guess my thought is, if we're going to allow trucks to park down there, should there be some kind of like permitting process, which is my feeling, because otherwise, you know, somebody could park anything down there, and we can't enforce it because we're allowing overnight parking. And so, I don't know, that was one thing I was going to ask the board, what their thoughts were, if it was discussed.
It was, and on the, the second page of this, the third item, it talks a bit about that overnight parking piece that's in there. So you have users of the marinas who are going to park there and are going to be overnight, you have other folks who are tenants, tenants of the condos, and then you have this other, kind of these businesses that are utilizing this. So that was something that we were kicking back to the board a bit, as far as what you would want that to see. There's certainly, there are ways that we can wrap things around that, we'd want to be a little bit careful, if you're a marina user and you happen to have a commercial vehicle, you've got an F-250, 350, that's a commercial vehicle, but you're just coming down to use your boat, if there's going to be a prohibition put into that section, we just need to make sure that we word it properly, that that person's just coming down to use their recreational boat, they're going out for a couple of nights, they can still park there, versus some other type of a commercial enterprise that's using it on a longer term.
One thing, Mark, is, what would, you know, I hate saying stickers, but obviously, when the waterways or the harbor master, you have a boat, I would think that they would have some kind of like recognition or sticker that they could put on their vehicle have some kind of like recognition or sticker that they could put on their vehicle that they're going to be using. So then you'd know it's a boat, somebody who's using it, as opposed to somebody who doesn't, who's just using it. Now, that also gets me to the condos, where I'm like, they have no legal right to park there. They don't, period. So they need to, at least if they're going to, then, you know, they should also get some kind of license to be able to do it. And I liken that, because a lot of people probably watching saying, well, what do you care? It's public property. Well, if you had your house and somebody's coming to park on your yard, I mean, at some point, you're going to say, get it off my yard, or better yet, I'll license you to be able to stay in my yard. So I'm like, especially this location, if this were on the other side, abutting an embankment, I'd say, well, it's different, but it's the vista that people have, and that's, I have no issues with the way that it's mapped out here. I think it's well done. I'm just thinking about that long-term. Second thought process is, well, we need to implement it now, maybe we can go back and figure out how it works and...
So we've actually looked at quite a bit of that, since the MAPC study 18 months ago. And so, what I perceive, we're coming back to you after Traffic Sign receives it from me, is an overnight parking permit for people in the condos, and then an overnight parking permit for businesses. And the cost will reflect that accordingly. Because you're right, there should be no parking there unless it's sanctioned by the town. And to the extent that most public parking lots have some sort of metering system, and, you know, that's not the route we're going, then the permitting system to just have a recognition that parking there is a privilege granted by the town, is something that, that we want to get the signage in and the traffic flow, and then we can address. Because part of that too, and I don't want to step on your toes, Lieutenant, or what you might be saying, is a lot of that, we have to restripe that parking lot. And so that, that's, that's the next step kind of thing. So we want to get that buttoned up, and then while that's happening, we can work on the mechanics of the permitting system.
Just, and I'm glad, it's in the fourth block, that's all.
And the sticker system is a really good idea, when people, you know, get their slip or whatever, they're mooring, we might be able to look at it. So otherwise, you're going to have trouble enforcing it anyway.
And also, I also want to clarify, because I don't want the fishermen or a whole separate segment that obviously needs to be...
Completely removed, commercial fishermen, yep.
I'm not trying to squeeze them out.
Sean?
That's a great plan.
Problem is, is just not enough parking. All right, this was all redesigned 25 years ago, 30 years ago, something like that, and they put these nice islands in. And then, they're nice, but they have to be maintained, but they take away from parking spots. So I know this is just trying to live with what we have, but kind of what Tricia was saying, at some point, you know, what every, and you, you know, if you're going to restripe, you just can't squeeze them in more, then people can't open their doors. But I hate to say it, maybe eliminate the islands. And that's down the road, you know, and it's...
The MAPC study too.
Yeah, so one of the things that did come out of the MAPC study was this kind of next piece, so you created a great segue, was the idea of changing the traffic pattern here to a one-way. So there are two big things that this accomplishes. One is increased safety in the area, but the second thing is the ability to then gain some additional real estate. So by having that one-way traffic flow on the far eastern side, along the bandstand side, there are, at the edge of each of those lanes, a number of hash marks, which could then be reclaimed as parking spaces. So on the, on that second map that you see there, at the end of those spaces, we were actually slightly more conservative than the MPC study was, as far as number of spaces there. But the idea being is, I think we capture 23 additional spots at the end there. And the other thing we look to do is, right now, there's kind of a prime spot that's for a police vehicle parking right in front of the marina there, in front of the harbor master's office. We look to move that and turn that to a loading zone. So oftentimes, you see people with the boats, they're unloading, taking their things down, give them a little 15-minute spot there that they can come there, roll the things down onto the boat, and then move the car. So our hope is that in doing that, we capture some additional parking along that backside and increase some of that space, because there is this finite amount of real estate down there, and we know that that's one of the things that we're trying to capture. On the other side of the parking lot, closer to the businesses, we also look to grab a couple of spots on that side, one of them being a short-term spot. As you probably see right now, you always have people running in and out of the laundromat, so essentially, there's a lane restriction that happens there almost constantly, as people come in and out, but also the dry cleaner, some of the other businesses there. So if we put a couple of quick transient loading spots there, and a couple of handicap spots, because there are already curb cuts in place there, that will ease access to some of these things, but also that one-way, again, will help with the safety of pedestrians crossing and things.
So, Mark, a loading spot is not necessarily for deliveries, but is someone picking up, you know, going to be two minutes grabbing their dry cleaner?
It's a small parking space, it's not necessarily a truck loading zone.
All right, good.
It's just a small parking spot. So we went down there, did some measurements and looked at things as far as how the layout is. There are an awful lot of curb cuts along there already, as well as hydrants and things. So to really try to put parking across that entire length, it's really not conducive to that because of the existing curb cuts and things that are there. So I think it was three or four spots potentially along the entire length that we could, we could capture.
Is the, the two-hour parking going next to the, like across from where the inn is? You know, the three parking spaces there?
Yes.
Okay, I just saw the map and the other one, just wanted to make sure.
Color coding? Do we, we kind of talked about that. Is it going to be sort of color-coded as far as...
So I think that's one of the questions that, I don't know if Town Administrator has any thoughts, but also Kevin Cafferty from Highway, if there's some ideas between color coding and/or signage that might go in there, of how we can best delineate what these spots would be. Probably some sort of creative ideas, so that people have an understanding of where one zone begins and the next zone ends. It's a lot easier when you're looking at the Google map to see, to see how the layout is.
So my question was, how are we going to delineate the different areas?
And some of the things, as it sits right now, where you go where that, that grass median runs, we've kind of made a natural barrier there between, that's the transition from all-day to long-term.
Right.
But there might be some other creative things that we do with planters or something else that might be used to help delineate those things.
One way could be the, instead of, I guess, white paint, you could maybe have the, the striping for whatever zone is a certain color.
Well, that's what I mean, color coding.
As opposed to going the whole entire, you know, pavement at first, to see if people understand it.
Just, just the striping colors. And that might be something too, that if it's being restriped, there might not be really a big cost difference, just to change colors.
Right, yeah.
That's what I was wondering.
That's a good idea.
One second.
Anne for Biopantry Road, two questions. First, I've always been very, very concerned, especially at heritage days, with the two-way traffic that runs in the back of the parking lot by the harbor, and its access to the gazebo. Because you come down those steps, and basically, you're walking into two lanes of traffic. Has any thought been given, if you're going to make this one-way loop, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's one-way there.
All right, so if you move that loop further down, and even put some type of parking in front of the gazebo, so that there is some room, if there are the bands, the situated band plays there in the summertime, are you taking your life in your hands with this traffic? Some way to reconfigure how people go into the Millworth, so that they are not going in front of the bandstand?
Whenever they do have an event there, they...
Walk it off.
Walk it off.
I know, but even, so people are out there picnicking, they've got small children, they're playing, whatever, it's just food for thought, just a suggestion.
I think one, one lane will help considerably, because there's only both trafficable in one way.
And my second is, in front of the movie theater, that used to be a bus stop, are you putting any parking spaces in front of that?
It's a fire lane, isn't it?
Yeah, right now, I believe it's a drop-off, but it's also considered, I believe, a fire lane.
Okay, fine, thank you.
That's something to consider, maybe in the future, only because I say for the purposes of the ice cream shop, you know, I guess I'm not sure how that would work, at least on our side, maybe, I don't know.
Is it town-owned property?
On Otis Place section, yes. On the one that faces the, going into Millworth, no, I believe that's, that's their property.
If you got rid of this median, you could probably have a strip of parking.
You could, that's true. You could. Perpendicular, not perpendicular, um...
Perpendicular to the current one, yeah.
Parallel parking, maybe. Or you could maybe have angled parking. I don't know. Good point.
Yes, sir.
People walk a 200-foot way. Have you taken any consideration of the tide, and that part of the area that you're going to make into one-way streets is going to be underwater in the summertime?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, right now, that's, whether it's one-way or two-way, that is the roadway access that people will have. So that, I think, in that way, doesn't change that it's something that people are utilizing anyways. I think what we're finding, by and large, is if there's tide there and people are aware of it, there are fewer vehicles that are in the lot, unless... So there are a few vehicles in the lot, hopefully, so that people can kind of encroach in a little bit outside of that roadway.
So what do you want us to vote on tonight, Mark? Does anyone have any, we've talked about this a number of times, I think we all like the parking levels. I think we like the one-way streets. Am I just shaking your head if...
Yeah.
And I think we like the extended parking, adding the spots to the end there to get a little bit more parking. You know, the loading stuff in front of, you know, CVS and stuff, I don't know how that's going to work, but, you know, the good thing is, it's not a huge capital investment. So if we don't like it, we just paint over it.
One thing on that point is the penalty. You know, I don't know what the fees are for, you know, violation, but I think if we made the penalties very high, then people are going to be really reluctant to want to get a $200 fine and find out that, you know, gee, I, you know, and abuse it. In other words, if they're in there going to the laundromat or getting their prescriptions, that's one thing, but if they're parking there indefinitely for 30 minutes...
This looks narrow there, if you had a car parked. But again, I think we try it, because all we're doing is painting asphalt. So if, if we find that the spots like Anne brought up pull people too close to the bandstand, then we can just eliminate a couple of them.
If it's not a commercial loading area, though, you just customize the sign and just put loading area and put a time restriction on it, is that how you'll handle it?
It would essentially just be a 15-minute parking space.
Okay, gotcha.
Instead of a two-hour...
Similar to those stuff by the bowling alley.
Just on that point, commercial loading, unloading, maybe it wasn't in your purview, any consideration or discussions about, because I know some people have complained about, generally at CVS, the trucks open and whenever they come in, and they block it off, Dunkin' Donuts, and I have to say, I spoke with Frank, the barber, and he was like, it's dangerous, primarily because it's usually, it's the elderly who are trying to get out across to get to the parking spot, and they're cutting in between the trucks, and it's not necessarily the traffic that's coming from the right or from the left, it's the one that's going to the left, so...
And that is...
It's not the one from the left, it's the one from the right. So I'm saying, you know, is there any consideration on that?
That is one of the challenges down there, because that's one of the reasons why we specifically didn't say that's a loading zone, because it's really not conducive to putting a 70 or 80 or 85-foot truck in that space. That becomes a problem. And then, how do you regulate that and not completely impact those businesses that are there?
But with the one-way going in that direction, at least they're looking one-way...
It's going to help.
To be able to at least look and not get clipped from the other angle, so I think it would help that.
It's easier to getting around the trucks, at least this way, you know?
Can I ask a dumb question? Do you measure out that pedestrian crossing, so it gives the trucks enough space to park there, so you see where you have that first one?
Yeah, so where that is too, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there's already a curb cut there, so that was the natural break of what that is. But I think that, it was a while ago that we went down and measured that, but it was 70 feet.
Yeah, from this crosswalk area back to the curb.
I'm just wondering if you look it down.
About 70 feet.
Are those, Mark, are those pentagons in the middle there, are they, is that just a painted path, or do you, you can put those things in the...
So this was really kind of a discussion point. It could be something that we use, like out on Front Street, where we put that pedestrian crossing in there. Part of this was, where we don't necessarily have a space to really conform to potentially everything that we need to conform to for putting a crosswalk in there, more the idea of, are there things that we can do to raise visibility and awareness that there are going to be pedestrians potentially crossing in any of these areas? I think when coming from this parking lot, a lot of times, people are going to take the shortest route anyways, so we want to be careful to say, people could kind of be crossing in different places. But I think also, from a retail standpoint, being able to highlight some of these walkways that are here, so people understand, hey, if I park here, I can cut through and I'll be over to Harbor House, or I can get through easier to the galley, or some of these other things. There might be people that don't necessarily know these walkways, they cut through to the other side. Particularly folks from out of town.
I mean, Marty's been saying this for a long time, that people speed on Front Street, and I think when we put those, those things on the road, people go down slower, and if you did that there...
I think that turned into a success. We got it, it was on a grant, and I think there was some thought initially of, how long are those things going to last before they run over? And I think we were all presently surprised that they lasted longer than we thought.
I'd like, I'd love to see more of it.
Need those.
I've talked to Kevin to try and get some more out there.
They're, they're not very expensive and they're easy to put in.
I think, Marty, and every, you know, every crosswalk...
Every crosswalk should have.
It will slow it down, and it, and what it will do is, all the ones who like to speed, they'll hit it, and then they'll slow down. I mean, it just, it makes sense to put it out there.
So from a standpoint of where we are with this, if, I think if everybody's in agreement, we would need to write up a formal executive action, just to get all the verbiage correct for what the changes would be to the traffic schedules. That, we have a traffic rules meeting on May 10th, which is right before your Selectmen's meeting, so we could have everything prepared. So it would be ready for you for a formal vote, as long as we know that you're comfortable with us finalizing this direction.
Great.
That's great.
Just the fine points on the overnight is all we really have to work out, right?
Yeah, but you wouldn't be voting that on the May 10th. That's for a later date.
We just have to write up the language as far as how the traffic schedule would be modified.
So like a phase two?
And we, we're going to talk about, you know, fees, you know, similar to, you would hang them also.
Different phase, huh?
Yeah. Great.
Motion?
We need a motion?
Yes.
Are we going to do a motion for this, or are we going to wait until traffic rules...
No, this is to put it to them. We need a motion.
With the overall project.
I think he's getting a good feeling.
We need a motion to go, for them to go to executive, right?
Do we need the traffic rules to move forward with what we...
Yes.
Just so, just do it, Marty, can't...
Yep. Moves that the Board of Selectmen approved the recommendations from the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee, and outlined in the MAPC parking study.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Very good. All right, we'll see you on the 10th.
It's a great plan.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Thanks. Moving on along, DPTW Projects, Kevin Cafferty.
Good evening. The first project we have before you is, we went out to bid for the first phase of the Waterline Projects, which is Phase 3A, and it's to award the first contract to CJP and Sons for a total contract cost of $3,353,461.44. We had nine bidders that bid on the job, and we had some pretty tight bids. CJP has also done work on Summer Street, Hathley Road, and on Glades Road in town, and we had good luck with them.
Whereabouts on Hathley Road, did they work?
The second phase.
And did they do the Summer Street job last summer?
Yes.
Are they the same guys that came back and paved this year?
Yes.
Well...
Is that good or bad work?
It's not good. It's not good. Their repaving is really poor. I don't know, I know you were away, so I don't know if you had an opportunity to drive over it yet. You might want to go drive over it.
Okay.
You know, it's not, it's really bumpy.
Okay. I have to agree with her. I drove in on Friday because I was going to my son's JV game in Beechwood. So I cut around Uplap and got on Summer Street. And I knew it was going to be redone, and I looked at it. I honestly thought it was like a patch from the year prior, you know, when they did the trench. And then I realized, no, this is the final product, Kevin. It's not good at all. I mean, you expect when you're gonna grind the street and then you lay down new asphalt, it's gonna be nice and flat. This is bumpy.
That's really bumpy.
Which gets me back to why I said Hadley. Hadley, we have been literally taking hits left and right, whether it's the first portion or the second portion. And I'm glad to see that it's doing great out here in First Parish, but it's not acceptable. I have to tell you, third time around, we really, you gotta figure something out. Because I, I'll tell you right now, it's, the people who did Country Way, Old Country Way and Country Way, I think it was Resendis, they did a decent job redoing it. And it's relatively flat in that area. It's not, it's not good.
Okay. We'll take a hard look at Summer Street and see...
Because what can we do, if anything? I mean, it's done. What we, of course, we have, we're talking about the road on Summer Street. I drove her over on Friday, I think Moore drove over today, or whatever. It's not done well at all. And it's the finished product. Basically, we got a patch job.
We haven't paid them for the work yet. So I haven't paid them, so I can have them go out and rework that. So that's, that's not an issue. It hasn't been...
Are they possibly using a different paver? Obviously, this is for the entire contract, so I mean, it isn't necessarily the same asphalt contractor, is it?
It's apples and oranges, Marty. What you have out here, you have T.L. Edwards, Terry Edwards, that's what they do. These guys are utility contractors.
They used to do it patching.
Yeah, and they have smaller rollers, smaller equipment. So you're not gonna get the same product. I went over it last week. I thought it was good, but one of my drivers said it was terrible today in one of my trucks. He said it was awful. So I feel like, Kevin, I want to go out and take a look myself.
Yeah.
Right.
And see, is it the existing road that's causing the problem? How the road was, or was it their patch? And we'll, we'll take a look at that same, you know, it could be the same issues that the gas company had on 3A. We can always have and redo it if that's the case.
That's how I thought. When I drove over, I was thinking, you know what? This reminded me of the state job on 3A. I was like, holy cow. And you could see it when you're driving down. It's not nice and smooth.
We haven't paid them for any of that work, so we have plenty of money for that.
Do we want to give them another contract?
I know, that's, what's our recourse here?
They did, they did very good work on the, on the pipe, and they did good work with the detours and everything else.
Well, let's see, can you build anything into it though for the repaving? I mean, you know, you have confidence in them with the pipe aspect of it, but as far as the repaving piece, can you write anything into it that they step up that part of it?
We can be all over them for the paving and really, really watch that is what we'll do.
Let's let them go, speak to them now, and we'll see what flushes out from that.
And as a matter of fact, I already did speak to them and said there has to be a big improvement on your, on your paving patch work when you do this work. And they were...
Why are we giving them another contract if we have to keep going back and telling them that they're doing a bad job?
Because of the water pipe part itself. They need, they've got to improve their asphalt.
I know, but we're giving them another 3.4 million bucks? Unless you remove the asphalt repaving part from this contract. And that's what I was talking to Kevin about. You know, but then you have to, you almost have to rewrite the whole contract, you know, to excavate and then to refill. It's different material and everything else, so it's, it's a different job.
And then liability for the piping is kind of up in the air too, right?
Not necessarily. He has a clerk of the works that's out there that watches. They have to, once the new pipe's in place, they have to put certain material under it, around it, and so forth. But it's a compaction method that they use and then temporary patch. So it's, and then it can vary from one area of town to another area of town. You know, it depends what the material is that they're taking out. And Kevin and I have spoken about this. You know, I have little knowledge with this company. They're planning on bringing a crushing plant in, so they're gonna process material that will go back in. That might make it better. But I was gonna abstain on this vote. I'm just, you know, if I can help, you know, answer questions or something like that.
Okay.
Do we have to pick them because they're the lowest?
Yes, and they're a qualified contractor. And to be honest with you, they, they did perform a lot better than some of the other contractors we had out there. I know, I know the road. We had a lot of problems with the roadway. Some of it was due to the thickness of the asphalt and the other materials that we ran across in that roadway, the clay materials and everything else. Just like we did when we did Musquashka Pond, when we did Sewer and the Water, we had a disaster of a roadway there. We also had a hard time with Hollitt Street. And Tilden Road, in Stockbridge Road, we had very similar circumstances with it. And we do have the contractors putting in new backfill on a lot of these areas.
Who's doing Turner right now?
Resendis.
Resendis, yep.
Who did Anvil? Because that's actually, of all the roads, that actually, in the end, a lot better than most.
Wasn't that CPC or something?
No.
CSB.
SB. And I, they were tough. They were very, very tough.
He almost ran me over in his loader once, remember?
Yeah, they were very, and I think they had a, they hit a, you know, Mark's not here, but I think they hit a detail officer's car one day with a piece of equipment, and we were ready to throw them off the job. But out of all the contractors, CJP was one of the better water contractors that we had. They had all signs made up specifically for the streets they were working on, for the detours. They did a really good job with the detours. There was no problems. There was excellent communication with the residents on when they were shutting the water off and turning it on to do the services, where we had other guys that just shut, shut it off without telling anybody, and we were arguing with them. So as far as the work went, they were one of the best contractors that we've dealt. And I wouldn't have grounds to disqualify them for future work. And we have disqualified other contractors that have gone and done this work. If I didn't think they could do the work, I wouldn't be bringing them forward.
So is your next item that's listed gonna be dealing with the, the rest of the story with the road? In other words, if they're gonna be, you know, I mean, I'm looking at it right now. We've got seven, 14 miles approximately of, of... Half roads done. And now we're gonna be starting that final phase, which it's going to be half the roads done. Or are they doing curb to curb? Am I jumping ahead of your list here?
No, not at all. This is, this contract that we're looking to award is the entire contract with the add option, and that's paving edge to edge on this project here. And I think this is about 17,000 feet of waterline. And it goes over a bunch of different roads. There's a list of the different roads that'll be going on. You don't think I listen, but we do listen. We're going, we're going edge to edge on these. It just, it just takes a while for us to get it back in the queue and get it all squared away here. It's Alden Road, Barker Road, Bay Ridge Road, Border Road, Dayton Road, First Ave., Hood Road, Kenneth Road, Mann Hill Road, Maple, a small section of Marion, Michael Ave., a big section of Park, Richfield Road Extension, Second Ave., Third Ave., Potter, Tick North Court, Tick North Court, there's a, there's another section that runs through the woods to loop the line, and a section on Wellesley Road. And either just the sections that are duct to lion pipe.
So that's this one that we're voting right now?
Correct. And the Phase 3B, we're gonna put on hold for a while, which we are ready to bid right now. And that's a section that's gonna get down 123 and all that other stuff. And we'll push that off until next year so we're not, we're not in a situation like we are now with all the roads that we have.
This is a 10-month project, so this isn't gonna happen overnight. To John's point, you know, gut of the gutter, but it will be probably, if you, if they start it in July or August, something like that, it could very well be, you know, it's gonna be 10 months before...
I spoke to CJP, and they would be ready to start up fairly quickly, so we might be seeing buckets in the ground within a month if they can get all their bonding and everything together.
But I think, I think their fear is, you know, more roads that have temporary patch going through fall, winter, and spring, I think. Unless, unless you can, you know, pave it once and for all, if, you know...
So I guess the expectation would be that they're going to dig the trench, put temporary patch down, let it settle for basically the season or the winter, come back and then do curb to curb.
Edge to edge, curb to curb.
Like Kevin, certain ones still have to be, have the grinding done, have the final coat. I mean, is that starting to happen with this, with the last phase, if you will? Besides the one they were talking about? So in other words, some of them have, were still coming out of the season, but they still have to be finished?
Correct.
Has that started? Is that already...
Yes.
Okay.
As we said, Summer was completed. Collier, Collier Avenue, I believe, was completed also.
That's what your list is here.
Correct.
Yeah.
Back to my question, I raised another one. So if they're using smaller rollers for, as opposed to T.L. Edwards, are, I mean, are we worried that potentially that their final product curb to curb's gonna be bumpy across the road, or...
Because I just don't pay them. If it doesn't, if it doesn't meet our standards, we won't pay them.
Or they'll sub it out to Terry Edwards for that part. If they can't handle it.
Because it is nature.
Right, right, right. I don't know, but, you know, but I can't speak for them.
And I don't, I can't speak for them either. I didn't say who's, who's your contractor for that, but...
The expectation would be they're gonna have to do, get a bigger roller.
Kevin, you can ask that question.
Yeah, I can ask that question in, regardless of what it is. You know, it's the finished product. If the finished product isn't good, we don't accept it. And we don't pay them for it. And we hold that money, and we could have T.L. Edwards come back in and redo it if that was the case.
Thank you.
So we should be good with this then? Because the most important part of it is the, is the water pipe, you know?
Okay. Make a motion.
Hang on.
Moves that the board of selectmen award the contract for Phase 3A of the Water Main Rehabilitation Project to CJP and Sons Construction Company Incorporated of Millis, Mass. for an amount not to exceed $3,353,461.44.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Albstain. Make that four zero. One abstention.
Thank you. And, you know, we'll, we'll keep a very close eye on what the, what the patching is, and that'll be a help to not, you know, not having three jobs going.
And if you bring like Summer Street to their attention right now to show them what we don't want...
Right.
Then it may save you.
Yep.
Well, that was the question I was trying to ask Kevin. So which ones have been considered finished so we can have a better idea, you know?
John, Kevin, are we, are we doing the...
I was, I was just gonna do a paving update of what's going on. We've ground out First Parish Road now from basically Grove Street all the way down to Ronnie Schoen's.
When's that gonna be done?
It's gonna, what, what we're going to do, and that's part of what I was gonna say, is on that particular road, what we will do is, everything's being ground down now. We're going to Hadley. We're at Hadley today. We did the majority of Hadley Road. We're gonna be grinding the side streets, just the entrance into the side streets next tomorrow. And then after that, we're going to the upper section of Glades Road, and we're gonna grind that all out. So we should be done grinding by the end of the week. What we will do after that is, we are coming in, we're scheduled within the next two weeks. Our tentative date in the queue is May 4th. We're hoping to be in sooner. We could be as early, as early as mid next week in for the actual paving. And what we'll do is we'll reshape the road. We'll put a skim coat on the road. And we're gonna reestablish the crown because some of those roads have gone flat. They will no longer had crowns. We'll put the crown back on. We will do that. Then we're gonna do some sidewalk work on Glades and Hadley Road. And after we do the sidewalk work, we'll raise all the castings, and then we'll come back in and put the final coats on.
So First Parish Road is gonna be in this, we're not gonna start paving that till May 4th? So it's gonna be just ground like this?
It's gonna be ground like this for probably about a week until mid next week, we're, we're scheduled.
I just think, you know, you want to tell residents that it's gonna get worse before it gets better. Once they start raising these castings, that's when you see the donuts around them. And that's really when you can blow ties. Shortly after that, then they're gonna come in and pave it, but...
Right. We won't raise the castings until the final paving's done because we have to do the sidewalk work first, so we'll keep all the castings down low.
Okay.
And go down over that.
How do you raise them? Jackhammer.
You jackhammer out, you pull the castings out, you brick it up and mortar it, and then you place the castings back on into, into the rig grade.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin?
No. Good.
Kevin, is that, is that field lining machine working?
It is.
It is?
It doesn't, field lining machine is working. They weren't able to get out because of some rain, I believe, at one point. I wasn't here last week, so I'm not sure. Paul Sherry talked to me today about something on it.
If we can get those lined, then my phone stops ringing. So I know, I know the beginning of the year is hardest because of the rain and because they're really starting from scratch because it's all, but...
We have the machine here. I made sure we ordered it back in March because I didn't want to wait till the last minute and find out there weren't any in stock. So we, the machine is here. I've seen it. It's physically ready to go out. I believe it's been out, but there's been some weather issues with them. Exactly what, I don't know for sure, but I can, I can follow up on that and make sure it's squared.
The other thing is, I don't know who we have to talk to, but the, the lights at the baseball field, a lot of the bulb, not a lot, but half a dozen of the bulbs are out. So I don't know whose responsibility is to fix those, but...
I can look into it.
Yeah, it's, if we have the, if we have the, it's silly if we have this beautiful light thing and we can't use it.
Who says it? Who's said?
Us or is that school?
It's the school and us.
School and us. I'll check with Kevin Kelly.
Kevin Kelly.
I thought, but you know, I thought we addressed this last year, is that there needs to be someone on staff regularly looking there.
Right. You gotta get feedback from, I mean, they're just starting to use it now.
Yeah, right. But I mean, we should make sure when we light them the first time, if they're out, that we're dealing with it.
But that would have been like this week, so...
All right.
Great.
Anything else?
Anything else for Kevin?
Thank you, Kevin.
We're working it. It's the roads and, you know, knock onward. They're getting there slowly but surely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is a discussion review of the Board Committee Handbook.
Yes.
Want to discuss that, or?
Sure. We took the, the old Board Committee Handbook and updated it to current information and put together the first draft of the new Board Committee Handbook.
So just, just a little correction to that. There's never been a Board and Committee Handbook. There's been a draft since two, whenever Bernice retired.
Okay, right.
Right. So I put this together like...
2013.
Whenever, is that when it was?
It might have been before that.
It was, it was Bernice was still here.
Yeah.
So, and she reviewed it and edited it, and it never got to this stage. And now we have Lorraine, who's incredibly organized and efficient, and she updated it, and then I edited it to reflect lots of things that have changed in the five years since we since did it. And so she's put it all together. And so, yeah, you wouldn't know that piece, that they never had one, that they've never had one adopted, but have needed one, obviously, because I was thinking about it five years ago, but, go ahead.
I mean, I feel that the boards and committees really need some guidance on what their responsibilities are. And they need some training. After, the first step would be, let's put together a Board and Committee Handbook. And then let's train them on how to, you know, make sure they know that they have to do the meeting agenda, that they have to follow the meeting laws, and what that means, what they need to post their minutes, and, you know, just go through...
That's a great idea.
We have some website editors that need to be assigned, and they'll train them on how to update the website so that we can have everything on the town's Situate website, their meetings posted on the events calendar, so that the public, you know, we run a very open town hall, and we want all of the boards and committees to reflect that as well. And I think it's just lack of training.
Right. The uniformity, we want Paul...
And uniformity for everybody, yeah.
Great. So I don't know if everyone's read the whole thing, but we'll just send you our feedback.
Sure.
Right, so in accordance with your policies, you should, this is your first review, so then we want to get any feedback from you, and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting for adoption. Right. So in accordance with the policies, you should, this is your first review. So then we want to get any feedback from you, and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting for adoption. We've timed it so hopefully we can give it to folks, because you're starting your annual appointments, and maybe have it available shortly after the Board and Committee Hearing Meeting.
That's great.
This is, I use this, this is updated considerably with the changes in the Public Records Law and the Conflict of Lynch's Law. But I used this in another community for years. It also deals with codes of conduct, not only for attendees to meetings, but committee members in terms of respect and civility, which we're finding more and more that, you know, it'd be helpful to just have, you know, what do you need minutes? What do they have to do to comport with the Public Records Law? Because there's been a lot of changes in those laws in the last few years. And the other thing that we're really doing right now is making sure that everybody has taken the audit tests. And we have a number of folks in Board and Committees that have not taken it, and that's a reason not to reappoint them. So we're trying to tell all those folks to. Yeah, you'll have it real time when they come before you. We're trying to let them know now.
Gotcha.
So they have.
Adequate time.
Adequate time.
Great. All right.
Great idea.
Put that on the agenda for next.
You can just go on to all the business for the next agenda.
Moving on to new business, a one-day permit for TK O'Malley's.
Move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day entertainment license to have one acoustic performer at TK O'Malley's sidewalk on Friday, May 6, 2016, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the Situate Harbor Art Walk. Second.
Second by Mr. O'Toole. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. One-day beer and wine license.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve one-day wine and malt license, too. Kate's Table Catering for an annual fundraiser on May 14, 2016, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. At Inlee School, 46 Watch Hill Drive. Taylor-made bartenders for a fundraiser on April 29, 2016, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Situate Maritime Center. Taylor-made bartenders for art, art walk on May 6, 2016, from 4:30 to 9:30 p.m. at the Situate, Situate Harbor. Taylor-made bartenders for a bridal shower on June 18, 2016, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Situate Maritime Center.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Great. Discussion vote for Board and Committee Appointments. And just a couple for tonight, the, first one is the Deputy Shellfish Constable.
Do you want a motion?
Please.
I'll move to appoint Stephen Moan, Harbor Master, as Deputy Shellfish Constable for a term of one year or until a successor is named.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And I move to appoint Kathy Downing as an election poll worker, inspector, and clerk for 2016.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Great. We did polling hours already. We have Arbor Day proclamation.
Who's the clerk?
That would be me. Ready? Would you like me to proclaim?
Yes, Selectman.
I will proclaim. The Arbor Day proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the town of Situate has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Situate, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2016 Arbor Day. And urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed to this 26th day of April, 2016, the Situate Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
That's exciting. Nice. It's my first Arbor Day proclamation.
I've said this before, a long time ago, a long time ago, the town used to give away little pine tree logs.
Yep.
Well, with all the trees falling down, I mean, you know, with these past two storms, you just walk through some of the town forests and the woods. So many huge pine trees have just snapped and come down these past couple of months, so. We need our trees, or else we'll be like California and have drought. You need trees. Anyway, I'll be quiet.
Okay. Any correspondence?
Few things here, huh?
Let's see.
We know tree issues.
Do the trees. Just another reminder, last reminder for everybody for this Thursday, April 28, 6 to 8 p.m. Cituit High School Cafeteria, the assessment of coastal erosion. So that's for everybody, not just folks that live on the coast. We really need everybody in town to attend that if they can. Some great information. Let's see what else is here. Oh, the Sister City Project on April 15, 2016. John, did you want to speak to that?
Um, it's actually the third is what they're doing. Yeah, what's going on is.
It's already gone past.
It's the, May 3, the, there's a Sister City Project. They've invited people to come to the Maritime, actually, what is it?
Yeah, it's Maritime.
It's at the Maritime Center.
Yep.
On, from 3 to 6. Where am I looking at from here? In essence, it's this. A number, I think there are 10 students from China are coming, and they're going to be with host families here in Situate. It's an interesting, they have a student exchange with the high school in China, and they're trying to promote, I think there's another potential language at the high school is Chinese. And you can understand why, given that fact that a billion people in China, Chinese, it's going to be a very important trading partner in the future. Nonetheless, they're having a reception forum down at the Maritime Center from 3 to 6 on May 3. And if you'd like to go, by all means, please join, you know. The things you're going to do with the Sister City program. China may be the next one. I know Ireland's one of the considerations. And we presently have one with our sister city, Sousian Brie in France. So it's been a great partnership and relationship with that city, and I can see this expanding. And this isn't a thing that goes on, you know, in the United States, it's very few to have these sister cities. A lot of the high schools have exchange programs in the past. In Europe, each town, or many towns, and I say each town, but towns within certainly the counties or the locale, provinces or whatnot, they all have like two to three to four sister cities worldwide. And it could be sister cities in Europe, it could be down in South America, it could be Middle East, it could be in Africa. It's amazing the program they have. And here in the United States, I think we've been a little myopic in looking at ourselves. This is a great program, and it's not just for children. It's for adults, it's for seniors. It's an exchange of cultural ideas. And so I, again, I commend people, if they're interested, go down, experience, take a look at it, see if you're interested in participating. So, anyway.
And then there's another important seminar coming on Saturday, April 30, which is this Saturday, from 1 to 3 at St. Luke's Church. It's being sponsored by our Social Services and Board of Health. It's a, Cituit Hoarding Response Team is sponsoring this, a presentation by a couple that travels all across the U.S. and Australia to talk about their insights and sharing about a very serious stigma in our society, which is hoarding. So please attend if you can. It's at St. Luke's Episcopal Church this weekend from 1 to 3 p.m. If you want to go, stop by. And then the Masix Cultural District Harbor Walk, which we've talked about. But that's another great event to celebrate our new Situate Cultural District. So that starts, does it start at 4? What time does that start, Trish? Doesn't have a time on here.
Actually, it's 4, I think.
Isn't, isn't it at 4?
It starts at 4.
Okay. Okay, great. So please come down. It's going to be a great, great event.
Wish for, hope for good weather.
Yeah. That's it, I think.
Great. Next item is acceptance of the minutes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the meeting minutes for April 5, 2016, for the Situate Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we are going to, well, we'll have any other business, why don't we do that first? Any other business? Marty, anything?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Laura?
No, I was going to talk about the coastal erosion, so I have done that. That's great. That's really what folks do.
Sean, anything?
Public buildings did walk through, the new science wing. I know Tricia had mentioned that, you know, the next meeting, I think we're meeting at Public Safety as well as the library. But we did at, yeah, it's not public, no, it wasn't public buildings, it was school building committee. Get it mixed up. We meet at the library about once a month, and Nancy and I, among with the other group, did walk through. They're about 90% done and, or 95% done.
Does it look good?
Very nice, very nice.
Some was impressed.
Right, right.
Good.
So that was, that was all.
Two things. First is, you know, yesterday I went to Cituit Chamber of Commerce. They had a gathering at the Sandhills General Store. I raise it because you guys have been down to it. It's turned into quite the hub for the community. And last night, I also saw that there was some comments about the Posty in Egypt, Egypt Country Store. And, you know, people who are supportive of it. And I just ask people, you know, go to these places, frequent them, because these are non-conforming businesses, that if they don't survive, that they're going to actually probably be bought, torn down, or converted into residential homes or whatnot. And if you want to have a local store, a community store, grocery store, something that you can get down to, whether it's for kids, for penny candy, whether it's for coffee, take the extra time to do it, because otherwise these businesses are going to disappear. So I just wanted to mention that, number one. Number two, Sunday, there was a commemoration for the Easter uprising of 1916. I want to commend John Sullivan with the Ancient Order of the Hibernians, who participated. They actually gifted the town the actual proclamation. It's a framed print of the proclamation that they gifted to the town. And I was going to actually provide it here. It's in the back of my car right now, but I thought it would be a nice thing to put up here in this hearing room. And I'll bring that in for the folks. But I just want to say, it was a nice event. It was on, put on by short notice, but it was well-attended by about 50 people, and I commend them for coming out. And somebody had suggested maybe it should be an annual event for it, and it was, it was a nice thing. So, any event. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for going with it. Can't even read it.
America's Cup. Too early. I don't want to step on Tricia's toes or anything like that, but I just think the more publicity, the better. Tricia, you want to?
It's been approved?
No, it hasn't been approved, and it's, you know, maybe we're putting the cart before the horse, but it's pretty exciting. So Tricia, tell, tell everyone what we know.
Well, just tell, we won't tell anybody. Don't, we won't tell anybody. Just tell us what it is.
No, Sean, Sean, you probably know the details better than I do. I mean, we do have a special event application. It's been circulated to departments.
And it wasn't, I don't think it was anyone's fault. They were just so excited about this happening, and I don't know if they knew the procedure. And, you know, so Tricia and I, and I think we're all hearing about it about the same time, but go ahead and tell them. It's, I think it's huge for the town, and my whole life, I've never seen anything like that.
Well, now you can tell them.
Let me tell them. I'll tell them.
Thank you. Yes.
Because I know, I know, because I got the email by mistake, instead of Mark and Nancy getting it, I got it. It happens all the time, but it's great. So the America's Cup schooner, one of the old original big schooners, is touring the East Coast, coming up from Plymouth to Boston. And they've chosen Situate as one of the ports to come in. So it'll be arriving on a Friday.
Hopefully.
If it all gets approved, it has to go through Trish and the Harbor Master and all the departmental approvals.
It's going to fit in the harbor, too.
It's going to fit in the harbor. It's coming in high tide and all that. Yeah, it's beautiful. It's the old schooner. Yeah, so it's going to be opened up not only for boarding, but also available that evening for any type of a fundraiser that somebody in town wants to hold, as well as bringing the junior sailing program onboard. I don't know if they're taking them out for a sail or not.
Well, so here, and Sean was alluding to, none of this has been shared with the town yet. So we've filled out the special app to the best of our ability, because we don't know if all those things you just mentioned are even possible. The carnival is the same weekend. So we're working with that now. And we need to confirm that we have enough. Thank you.
The board drafts 11 D.
Right. Stephen seems to think it'll be okay.
It depends on the bottom, too.
Yeah.
As long as it's not rocky.
Right. So those, so that's the thing. So there's lots of folks, to your point, involved in it, except that the sort of mundane devil in the detail stuff, we're still working out to make sure all those things are actually possible.
It's an exciting opportunity.
Yeah. But we're all over it. We're, we think it's a wonderful opportunity. It came up at the Cultural Harbor District Meeting. And there's an embellishment, gave me a heads up. And then Marty mentioned it to me yesterday at the Tri-Camber event, and then Sean mentioned it this morning. So we're trying to pull it all together. Yeah.
Just all good stuff.
But it'd be great. It'd be really exciting. And so, yeah, we've been trying to get them to stop here between Boston.
July 22 is what I, that's what I heard.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one of those Fridays.
Yeah. It's being circulated to the department now, and we attached the blurb you dropped off this morning, Sean.
Great.
Yeah.
Great. Just a couple of quick things. I'll start with the lighter one. Spring sports are here. Baseball, lacrosse, softball, girls' lacrosse. Ton going on over there. So go and see, the baseball team is 1, 2, and 4 so far. They beat Coasette twice last weekend. Great weekend for that. And the Chowder Cup was here for the boys' lacrosse. So there's a lot going on to see. And then, of course, all these. The only other thing I want to bring up is we haven't met since the town meeting a couple of weeks ago. And want to thank the few of you that attended that meeting. And it, I guess, it was, it was rather disappointing when there was only 200 people that came to decide how we spend $80 million and, and deal with key policies in the town. So I guess I'd like to, at some point in time in the future, and a lot of towns are doing it. Tricia was telling me today, Marshfield just had their meeting, and they had the same, same type of problem. But it's something that we need to start talking about in the future, about how we get more participation and how we run our government. And I'm not, I don't necessarily mean that we change our form of town government, but that's something we should talk about in the next couple of years, as well as, you know, including some sort of technology or something to get more people involved in what goes on in this town. Because it's quite, you know, it's a little disheartening when all the energy that goes into it, you see 200 people at town meeting, 50 of the people work for the town, and they have to be there, and, you know, to describe their articles and stuff. So I think it's just something that this board and future boards have to think about seriously to figure out how to get some of the, some more of the 10,000 voters to these events to decide the direction of the town. Because as we all talk about, it becomes very special interests, and you get 100 people at a town meeting, you get whatever you want. So. But the people that did show up, we had good discussion. The meeting got done by 11. I thought, I thought it was, you know, very well-prepared and very well-run town meeting, and I thought everything worked out well. But I think that that's a big picture problem that we've got to, you know, start getting on, on our plate. And I know a couple of you guys agree with me as well, so. That's all I have. We're going to go into executive session and not come back into public session.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Oh, one more thing?
Nancy holds birthday today.
Ooh.
Happy birthday!
Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
Do you really want us to say?
Spent her whole day, she spent her whole day here.
Oh.
Anything, yeah.
Thank you, Nancy, for.
Happy birthday.
Living another year and helping attend.
Yes.
Great. So. The motion.
You got to explain what we're going to do.
Yeah, so we're going to executive session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may be, have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and we're going to discuss the fire department. We're also going to discuss the deployment of security personnel or device, devices or strategies with respect thereto. And so that's why we have to go into executive session. So if I can have, I don't have the wording for the motion. Does anybody have?
I have motion, but I'll just, I'll move. I'll make the motion. He first he made it explain. I move to, move into executive session, not to come back into public session, to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and has been so declared by the Chair concerning the fire. And second, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, with respect to Clemens, which has been declared by the Chair.
Second, yes. Second, Mr. Harris.
Second by Mr. Harris. A roll call vote to move to executive session. Mr. Biniani?
Yes.
Mr. Danny?
Yes.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. O'Toole?
Yes.
Can I, folks?
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.